Can you hear me on the microphone? We're still working on this, so just be patient. But we'll have ears to hear. We'll center ourselves with prayer. So take a deep breath. Find yourself in this space and with the community around you. And let's pray. Holy and gracious God, we thank you for the ways in which we can connect with one another and be in conversation. Allow us to hear one another, to listen well and deeply with curiosity and grace, and be able to articulate our questions, our concerns, our great joys in ways that each of us can hear as well. Help us to make good decisions and visioning going forward as a community, and allow us to continue on the path that you have set before us, following your vision, your mission for this place of Stevensville United Methodist Church. We pray all of this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you and welcome to all of you that are here. I appreciate y'all being here today. Can't hear me.
We know this one works.
First of all, I would like you to take a couple of minutes and let me know what you think about what we have done with the sanctuary here. We have taken out 10 pews and set up these chairs. Main reason being that when the fellowship hall is demolished, we will have to use this as a meeting space. So that means that we will probably have a table or two in here and have to use this to have whatever meetings that we're going to have in this space. The pews are in the fellowship hall now. We will store them. We are not getting rid of them. We will learn together how we would like to see this space evolve if we want to. If we don't want to, then we'll put it back to the way it was. I really have two minds of this. I mean, I've been coming to this church since, first time I was here in 1981. Yeah, 40 years ago. And it didn't look like this. It looked a lot different than it does now. It looked different than it does now. And it will look different again. So this is the evolution of the space in which we have decided to have this church. So please keep in mind what you like, what you don't like, what you would like to see, and that kind of thing. And we will be in discussion of this for, I don't know, a year? Six months? I don't know. However long it takes for us to come to some sort of consensus as to what we would like this space to look like going forward.
What kind of changes should we anticipate just because of media stuff that has to happen?
You know, I don't think we'll see that much difference in the space as far as media goes. I can't say for sure. But hopefully there will be less wires. For those of you who don't know, the sound system for the church has always been these 12 speakers along the perimeter of the balcony. And two amplifiers and a mixer and a cassette player and a DVD or a CD player back here behind this door. Well, this spring when it was so rainy, we shorted out one of the amps. So these speakers that are around here no longer work. So we grabbed this about the same time that we weren't having church and then decided that we would use this. I have been in conversations with an audio/video company called Sweetwater out of Indiana. They've been a great help. And we have bought some additional equipment and are still in discussions with them about how we want this to look. We continue to evolve how services are going. There are still many churches in the United States who are not doing this. They are only doing that. Or videotaping it, or just doing everything virtually. So that's kind of changed the way things. And every time Sarah and I sit down and talk about it, it looks a little bit different. So I'm not sure what it will look like. I have a couple of ideas. But I don't think it's really going to impact the space that much. I would like to think that it would just make it easier for everybody to hear and see, whether they're here in person, whether they're online, watching live as we're doing it, or whether they're watching something that's been recorded. Those are the three things that we will probably try to do. And as I have said before, that unfortunately is probably never going to go away. I anticipate that meetings and services and memorials and all that concerts and all that stuff will be virtual for the next couple of generations anyway. Yes, Bev?
I just want to thank you for doing all this.
Well, you know, there was a pretty serious decline in my work day about the middle of March that continued until the middle of September. So this was and is pretty important to me and my family, that this place be as optimal as it possibly can be and vital still and a place of importance within this community.
I've heard many people say that they like the feel. It's almost like a circle now, and we can see each other. And the second altar in the middle puts that in the middle of us. So those are things that I like very much. I agree with you. There's too many wires.
Yes, at some point, ideally this will be moved back someplace where you can see and hear and will be operated. I don't know if any of you have been to bigger churches. If you ever have an opportunity to go to a church of 1,200 or 1,500 people and see what they have in the back, it looks a lot like a recording studio. They've got a whole panel that's four feet long and three feet deep. They got a couple of computer monitors. They have at least one, probably two or three tech people that do the sound and the video and do all that stuff for churches. The United Methodist Church website and Facebook page almost always features a church from somewhere in the nation, in the United States, that you have an opportunity to watch what their Sunday service is like. And I've been doing some of that too, seeing what they do. One church in Massachusetts, that's a beautiful old historic building. And they have six people spaced out in the sanctuary similar to this that are singing the hymns. And you can hear them sing, and you can see the words below them. And it looks really nice. But that's all. The pastor usually gives a sermon from somewhere else, not in the sanctuary. And you hear the piano players. Somebody plays a prelude and a postlude from a piano. And you get to see that. But there are tons of different ways to do this. So any ideas or feelings you have about what you have seen, if you have watched it virtually, if you have watched on Zoom on Sunday, or if you have watched the YouTube-recorded videos, please let us know what you think. We're starting to show, there's been videos recorded by Pastor Sarah of the children's sermon. Kami Edgar did one last week that was online that we saw. We're also starting to record some praising and music. We're recording that and playing that on Sundays and online. So there's a lot of stuff that we're experimenting with. Any other comments or questions before we move on to topic number two? Yes?
I do like the blend between the chairs and pews. It's kind of a nice balance that it feels good.
Paul, can you just repeat that for the team?
Yeah. Anna said that she likes the combination of chairs and pews, and it kind of helps everybody kind of smooth into things. Yeah. Carol?
I'm just curious as to the accommodation of people. Do you know how many chairs or how many people can be accommodated by the chairs versus when we had the pews with the social distancing?
Social distancing, we were doing three or four people to a, or two or three people to a pew out here in the center was all. So in 10 pews, it was probably 20 to 22 people. And there are 24 chairs here? I haven't counted.
So if you see on the pews, there are blue marks. Those are where people are supposed to sit for distancing. And so those are on the pews in here. So there were eight on each side, and now there's 10 on each side for the chairs. But more specifically, this was arranged so that it can be socially distanced for AA and Wednesday morning Bible study and things like that, so that you can reconfigure it and then put it back. So it would never be more than this during pandemic time. But you could imagine it could be more chairs in the future and potentially even more space for people to sit.
Yeah, I would think that we would be able to get six chairs in a row if we lined them up like the pews were. But like Sarah said, until we get to a time where we don't have to, I don't like to call it "social distancing."
Physical distancing.
Physical distance. When we don't have the physical distance, this is probably as 10 chairs on each side is as many as we will have. And the nice thing about the chairs, like I said before, is that you can move them around. And then we'll set them back up like this her on Sundays. But when you're having a meeting and you need to sit in a circle, you can do that. And you need to spread out. You can leave empty chairs and that sort of thing. So this is as many as we will have in here at this point. Of course, as you well know, Carol, these are not cheap chairs. These are quite expensive. So it will take some sort of, I hate to say the F, fundraising? I hate to say that. But it will take some money to be able to replace the pews, if that's what we decide we want to. Okay?
Paul, can I just speak to the? I just wanted to highlight what we're going to plan on doing for worship going forward. We'll continue to have two services, one at 9:00 and one at 10:30. Both will be inside in this space once it gets too cold at 9:00 to come. And that is an ever-flowing idea. Certainly through September, we'll see what October brings us. Both of them will be Zoom-cast. Only the 10:30 service will be recorded. They will have a different feel, so the 9:00 will maintain a more contemplative feel with about a 30 to 45-minute service. And the 10:30 will have more elements, some special musics, children's time, prelude, postlude, praise music before it. Each will have scripture and message, which are high priorities for people. Each will have prayer together and with the pastor. And each will have music in some capacity. And so that's how we'll go forward, at least through 2020. And then we'll kind of reevaluate into the rest of the day. We will have probably two services for Christmas Eve, but that information is only September, folks. So we'll get there when we get there. Yeah, so anyway, know that even those thoughts, those special services, are in mind, and we'll try to figure out how to do that. And as you can see, we still have a very empty balcony, and that is very usable space. So that's a possibility. Any other comments about space or about worship services? All right, we're going to spend probably the next 17 minutes or 20 minutes beginning the conversation of a single accountable leadership board, and Paul's going to take that over. But I just wanted you to be aware of the time, because we do have service at 10:30. So it does not mean that decisions are made or that we have to come to anything. We're just going to begin the conversation. And then if there are questions left over, please let us know, and we'll bring them up the next time that we meet. Okay? Thanks.
Okay, I have, Sarah and I and a couple other members of the congregation have been in discussions about this single leadership accountability board for probably close to a year. Thinking about it, trying to discern whether or not that is a decision that we want to try to make within this congregation. It's something that there are a lot of other churches that have gone to this. And the main reason that they're part of the, I shouldn't say the main, but one of the big reasons they're doing this is to make the church way more missional, which means that we have ministries and outreach within the community that we really push that to be our strength. And that we do less bureaucracy, for lack of a better word. Methodist, ever since I've been involved with the Methodist Church, I've always been astounded at the number of committees that we have. Not to say that any of those are not important. They are all important, and they will not cease to exist. People, the problems that we have had, and this is not, here again, this is not the main reason that we're doing this, but part of the problem that we have is it's difficult to get people to serve on those committees. It really is. It's difficult to get people to say, "I will commit to being here once a month and spending eight to 10 hours a week working on something that is important to me." It's tough, because we all know that the most important thing that is involved in all of our lives is time. So that is one of the things that's brought us to this. The other is an opportunity for us to be able to create and nurture leaders within our church and within our community, which is something that we are sadly lacking in today's society, which is one of the reasons that we're burning our cities. We have a serious lack of leaders, or people who aren't able to lead, or are willing to lead. So to me, as someone who has always kind of felt that this is part of what my gift is, it's important to me that we continue to nurture people who have those skills or who are interested in those skills, but are afraid that somebody's going to say something negative about them, which is the biggest thing, the biggest problem that we have in our world today. Thanks to social media, nobody is, you can say whatever you want and be anonymous. So that, to me, is one of the big reasons that I would like to see us move to this smaller board, is that we will have an opportunity there to create and assist and nurture leaders within our church. And there are some. And there will be. And this will help us get to those people. This will also, I say, probably kind of a far-fetched analogy, which my wife likes to tell me I do quite often. When I was talking to someone this week, I said, "This is what I have begun to call the 'I know a guy' board." So having been involved, you know, of the people that I work with or the people at the school, I have discovered this in the last couple of weeks, that there are only two other people besides me that have been there that long. So when something happens or somebody wants to have a question answered, they come to me and I say, "Yeah, I know a guy." Because I've been here a long time. I know a lot of people, and I find out who can do what, which is the other good thing that a small leadership board like that can do. They can walk out to a guy and say, "Hey, here's what we thought of. Here's what we're visioning for the future. And when we were talking about that, we thought of you. And this is what we would like you to try to do and accomplish in the next three weeks." And then you're done. And then you can move on and, you know, contribute your time somewhere else, wherever it may be. So we're not asking you for a commitment that's going to last forever and that's not going to bog you down. Because then you can say, "Hey, you're right. This is something that's important to me. And guess what? I know a guy." And maybe he knows a guy. Or, you know, I'm not trying to be, I'm talking about people, not just men, that you can put together a group of people who could say, "All right. We need to trim those shrubs at the parsonage. We need to help put together backpacks for kids. We need to serve food at Thanksgiving. We need to help out at a home. We have some people who are looking for a place to live. We have some elderly who are at the nursing home that need somebody to go visit them." All those types of different things that we can put in our missional efforts too as we move forward. This gives this board an opportunity to vision for the future, to look to where this church wants to go. And of course, as we proceed with what's happening to the east of us here, that's a huge mission for this church, huge. Right now, because of COVID, there are people who are really looking for care for their children because they have to work. Their kids are at school all day, but they can't, you know. So daycares are having to really figure out how they're going to do this stuff. And they don't really have a lot of good answers. So this is an opportunity for us to help with that situation. And it's a huge mission for this church. It's going to be, it's going to be big. It's going to be changing for this congregation in so many ways that we don't even realize at this point. But believe me, it's going to change a lot of things that are happening. Yes, Kami?
Just from my perspective, over the last year of a couple of things that we've done here in this church, I can see how having a single entity would be really helpful in streamlining the process. One thing that I'm thinking about is when we moved our nursery. There was a whole lot of confusion about, well, who gets to decide that? Is that Christian Ed? Is that Adboard? Is that trustees? Is that SPRC? Who's responsible for that decision? And same thing, once I became chair of SPRC, looking at, okay, if I'm hiring someone, do I need approval from any other of our committees? Do I need approval from finance to be able to set the salary if we want to give someone a raise? You know, there's a lot of overlap and redundancy within our current structure. And I think that being able to streamline that would take a lot of time out of the process for everyone involved.
So I'm not sure how many of you were able to read the emails, and there is some more information out there. But I wanted to give some clear, what does this look like? So a single board model would include all of the book of discipline required committees, SPR, trustees, finance, and Adboard. The lay leadership and nominations committee would be separate because they are nominating that board. That's, I should say, that's one particular look of the structure. There's possibility to have SPR as its own thing and the single board. But each of those people around the table, nine to 11 people, would serve in each of those capacities. So you would begin, you know, putting on your trustees hat, your finance hat, your SPR hat. Each of those have their own roles, but the focus of that group would be to govern and then to provide mission and vision for the church. So it's less of a reporting group, and this is what's happening, and more of a, what's going on? How are the ministry teams living out mission in our place? So if we're thinking about prayer, if we want to highlight prayer for the year, how will worship do that? How will children's ministry do that? How do we need to infuse that into our stewardship time or into our missions time? So it would be a governing, but also a visioning board. You ask, "How will, you know, how will the church get painted?" Or, "How will we hire new people?" That board would serve as sort of a launching pad. So if there's a particular project that needs to be done, there would be a handful of folks from that group joining other people in that task to do it. So you don't have to wield a hammer to be on the team, but you can guide a team to paint the building. SPR will always be a confidential space by virtue of what they do. Therefore, the single board would also be a confidential space when it's talking about SPR-related items. Otherwise, this board is actually, part of the reason it's called an accountable board is because it is accountable to the entire congregation, and the entire congregation is accountable to it. What I mean by that is that it's every, even though there are only nine people sort of in that room kind of helping craft vision, it's everyone who says, "You know what? I'm seeing that this is our mission, and we're not living into it. You know, we're about caring for each other, but our care team has kind of crumbled." Or, "I'm not getting calls," or "I'm not getting messages." Okay, so the executive team, excuse me, the single board team would say, "Where do we need to bolster that? Maybe create a task team to go do that." So we become accountable to one another. And I have heard questions, like, "Does this just mean it's a smaller team to do the work?" No, in fact, it's a small team to kind of organize, streamline, but it's, and then to launch, to launch the next group. I like to think of it as a tree. What gives nutrients to the branches? It's the trunk. I mean, there are roots below it, so we'll call Roots are God. And then the trunk would be the single board. And from there, branches of ministry can go and be fruitful. So that's kind of the image I'd like to offer us. The other questions are, what kind of skills do you need to have to be on this team? Lenny brought up a great question at our Adboard meeting on Thursday. Maybe not everyone has finance skills or trustees skills. So we would have to really rely on a full team to have the mission as the focal point and then rely on the gifts and graces of people to do those things. Lenny is a great example of having a gift of finance that many people on any of our teams are like, "Praise God Lenny's here." Okay? So, sorry, Lenny, I'm not getting you out of this. But in the same respect, some people are more, have a better mind of how projects in a facility are going to unfold themselves. There will be people who have a better sense of how to work with personnel. And then there will be folks that can do long-term visions and folks on the team who will be able to do the details that happen in between all of those long-term visions. So that's kind of the what it looks like. We'll just stop there for now and ask, what questions do you have? Comments, concerns? Yes, Bev?
Are there any other churches, Methodist churches, that have established a system like that?
Yeah, so there is a lot. It has become a more and more popular way of governing, again, in part because people are wanting to launch, to free people to do ministry and not be in committees. So I could name a good handful of people just in Montana, but I just talked to a friend who's in Great Falls who's doing it. There's another church in Boulder. There's another, I mean, I, yes, I could give you a list if you wanted to have them. And each of them kind of does them uniquely. I will say that it will continue to be an open conversation. So anytime the single board meets, it would be open to anyone to provide comment. It would just be those elected people, including UMW and UMM representative, if they want to be there, that would be voting members. But anyone can provide comment or say, you know, whatever. Questions? Good question. Questions, good question. What other things are on your mind? Yeah, Carol?
So are you saying anyone could come to the board meeting?
Absolutely.
Yes, and I apologize. Yep, thank you. Anyone can come to the board meetings. Thank you for asking that question. And even now, anyone can come to the Adboard meetings, which is why we sent out an email in the middle of the week inviting you to. That will, by virtue of COVID, we kind of got off our rhythm. But for the rest of the year, any third Thursday at seven o'clock will be Adboard and anyone is invited to come to that in person or on Zoom, depending on how we're doing it. And there will be a notice going out for that. So you can provide questions, comments at that point. Yeah, Dusty?
On the board, is there set people for contact? Like there's a set, is there a set person that's the trustee contact and a set person that's the SPR contact?
Great question. Yeah, so we would, I think that would be how it would be structured in part because we want to make sure that if there's a task, specifically an SPR task, we can't go out and create a new group for that. So it may be that there will be three people that would be SPR all the time and only one of those people would rotate off in a year. Also a contact for trustees for the church in general, but also to the conference wide. So it depends on how we kind of structure it, but we would name those and it would be clear. Thank you. She asked, would there be specific titles or roles that you would play? Sorry for not repeating the question. Yes, Anna?
I see it also as an opportunity for growth because you might have special, people that have special gifts. But somebody that may not understand it may ask a particular question that will bring out something that we all learn from.
Right.
And so not only can they learn more trustee stuff and finance stuff, but they can also ask a quote-unquote done question that will lead to something that we may not have ever thought.
Brilliant. That is a great way to end. Anna said that this could be a great gift to extend our understanding of things that we don't know, but also to share our gifts with one another so that we're not siloed in the things that we tend to do well or not well, but instead encourage each other in that work.
And also get people from outside the congregation.
And get people up.
And those teams.
Right, yeah.
To be just people that come to church here.
Right, extend teams for trustees, all of those things. As I said, we are kind of coming up to our worship time. So I appreciate your engagement. If there are questions that weren't answered, we're going to have another conversation in October. We'll have a town hall meeting October 11th at 9:45 in between the services. It will be really important to continue this dialogue and I really, really, really encourage you to talk to anyone on the Adboard. Lisa Menery, Anna Storkson, Paul Luddington and I are working specifically on the single board, like kind of putting guidelines together and things like that. But we need your feedback. The reality is that this is not a, this is not a top-down decision. This is a congregation decision. And by that virtue, it will be a congregation vote. There is no rush, but at the same time, there are great opportunities if we end up doing this. Okay? So please know that, don't feel pressured, but we want to have this conversation. And if it says, no, 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 slow down, stop, then we need to hear that as well. If it says, go, 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 then we will go, go, go. All right? Thank you again for your participation. And for those of you who are worshiping, welcome to the space. We will start soon.